I call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, January 27th, and the time is 6:00 P.M. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website as soon as possible. Welcome, members of the community here tonight to observe the important work being done on behalf of all school district stakeholders. Dr. Hillman, we have some items in the table file. Will you update us?
Yes, we had a few items in this evening's table file. We had an updated financial forecast with the anticipated budget reduction targets for the 25-26 school year. The narrative in slide deck were part of the table file, but they were also published on the website on January 24th. We also have a committee report from SEVSEC and then a personnel item as well. That's the table file for this evening.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there are no objections, we will add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Okay, move by Jeff, second.
Second.
Mike, sorry, thank you. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Closed, motion carries. Kelly, do we have any public comment tonight?
No.
Okay, very good. Then we'll move on to announcements and recognitions.
Yes, we have several announcements and recognitions this evening. First of all, we want to congratulate a Northfield High School teacher, Jody Saxton-West, for receiving the Region 1 AA Fine Arts Distinguished Service Award. Jody was recognized on January 23rd at a regional luncheon for her contribution to speech and fine arts. She was nominated and introduced by retired Northfield High School Activities Director, Tom Grautman. And if you know Jody, she is around the district doing lots of great work with speech and with all sorts of other activities. So we're just so grateful for Jody's effort. And again, I was shocked she had not been recognized with this award before. So we're just happy to see her being recognized by Region 1 AA. Want to congratulate the boys' swimming and diving team. They finished third at True Team State last Saturday. And so they have continued to have such a strong showing in that True Team event, which is just a really a great showing across the state for the boys' swim team. We also want to congratulate eight Northfield High School students who will be advancing to the State Business Professionals of America competition. That'll be held in Minneapolis in March. Those students who are advancing are Zane Engels, Nick Eschen, Josh Garrett, Haley Graber, Aki Gupta, McKenna Malika, Olivia Voight, and Tristan Westergren. So congratulations to those students for advancing to BPA. And of course, we want to recognize since the last time that we got together, our own board chair, Claudia Gonzalez George, was formally recognized by the Minnesota School Boards Association with their Rising Star Award. This is one award that is given to a board member in their first term, completing their first term, for exceptional contributions to the board. And it was very heartwarming to hear the testimonies that had been included as part of Claudia's nomination. So we congratulate you, Claudia, again, and thank you for your leadership and pleased to see it being recognized across the state.
Thank you, thank you for the nomination. And I'm thankful to serve on this terrific board and such a wonderful community. I brought the Rising Star Award. It's in the back if anybody wants to see it. Quite amazing.
Very cool.
Amazing to be nominated and to be selected.
I know, we're all proud. That's what we got.
All right, terrific. We are on item five, items for discussion and reports. And first up is our Indigenous Parent Meeting and Service Update. Director of Instructional Services, Hope Langston, and Indigenous Family Cultural Liaison, Sybil Betten-Singer, will share the activities associated with improving services to Indigenous students and families. Welcome, Sybil, welcome, Hope.
Good evening, everyone. We're glad to be here tonight.
Hello.
We are really excited to share with you the components of this year's American Indian program and plan that was submitted to MDE earlier this year. And we're going to walk you through it. And we are excited about the different things that we are going to offer our families this year. We're sort of splitting the slides, so here we go. So we start with our mission, which is preparing every student for lifelong success, developing critical thinkers who are curious and are ready to engage in our society. We are tracking the benchmarks and using some of those as the metrics to measure the success of our American Indian plan. So obviously, we're grounded in our vision as we do this work together.
So our mission for our American Indian education program is that it preserves, respects, and honors their traditional and spiritual values of our American Indian communities that our students across the district will receive quality education that affirms their cultural identity, and we felt that was really important. The eligibility provides services to students who meet the following criteria. It's for enrolled members of a tribe, band, or Alaskan natives. And it's also available for students who are descendants of a parent or grandparent of a member or a tribe or Alaskan native as well. And then, who are our native students? Our families represent about 16 tribes across the nation, spanning from the north, south, east, and west. And the majority of our families belong to five Minnesota tribes, which include the Fond du Lac Band of North Superior, Chipewa, Leech Lake, Ajibway, Malax Band, Ajibwa, and White Earth, and also a Dakota Sioux tribe as well. So one of the areas that we're really focusing on is supporting the post-secondary preparation of our students. And we are looking at providing support by identifying and eliminating the barriers to school attendance and looking at improving the access to colleges and providing financial aid resources and tutoring supports because we really want to increase the post-secondary efforts of our American Indian students. And also looking at providing available tutoring services for students who have been identified as at-risk, who are meeting the academic benchmarks in the district of the standardized testing, or they may be failing the classes, or refer to the problem-solving teams and other at-risk identifications of, by other student support teams as well. And also, we looked at other support services and listened to the families in the community, and that was driver's ed as well. One of the measurable outcomes is that we really want to increase our students by having consistent attendance. And last quarter, it was 76.2, and we want to increase that by 90%. And also, we felt, and also in collaboration with our families, of increasing the graduation rate by 95%. Area two is looking at supporting the academic achievement of our American Indian students, and that will be supported by cultural liaison of looking at the specific needs of our students and families by providing intentional outreach and building the relationships and collaborating with different key through supports by linking them to different various mainstream resources to help by ensuring the academic success. And as I mentioned before, that would be including like tutoring resources. And the measurable outcomes again would be looking at making sure that every preschooler is screened by the age of four. Another outcome would be 70% would be considered proficient in reading and in math by the end of third grade and sixth grade and eighth grade as measured by MCAs. Another area is making sure that the curriculum is really relevant to the needs and interests of our American Indian students. And we took that feedback by our students and families. And one of the things that our students and families said is that they really wanted specific native, specific field trips. So one of the things that we're planning on doing is taking them to Prairie Island, to the Edwin Buck, and also to the Hokakata Tee as well, because they really enjoyed that last year. And another one was having linguistic supports. And one of the ways we could do that is by doing the Rosetta Stone applications. And we will also collaborate with various American Indian consultants to make sure that we could provide appropriate culturally responsive programming to make sure that we are really meeting the educational needs of our American Indian students. So we want to make sure that we are going to survey the interests and make sure that we get about 80% of our students and families that they say that they're satisfied with the programming. Area four is that they have positive reinforcement of self-image of our American Indian students. And again, we will provide them with cultural resources to bolster their spiritual, cultural heritage. And we really have integrated different feedback from our parent meetings and also ongoing feedback as well. And also collect the feedback from our students. And another way we measure that is also from the SSIS screener. So we want to make sure that we have about 80% of, that 80% or more will report no internalizing or externalizing behavioral concerns. And also, for area five is developing intercultural awareness. We will do that by having professional development with Anton Troyer on the 17th. And we also had the opportunity last year of participating in an event by the Sioux-Minnewakan Tribe, and they connected us with a really great resource of Understand Native MN, which is a great guide for teacher resources. And so we will do that as well.
I'm going to go back just a sec to clarify a couple of things. One is a huge shout out to Sybil because this is the second time we've, the second year that we've submitted a plan that requires much more detail than it had in the past. And this year, they actually gave us specific feedback and had us resubmit. So that's a first. But Sybil did an amazing amount of work in the first year of the program, reaching out to every family. And I know we were here last year talking about that outreach and how successful that was. But what that allowed us to do is get personal feedback from each family about what it is that they need. And that's how this plan was built. And then the second thing I want to point out is the self-image of our native students. Dr. Hillman and I had the, had the opportunity to attend two blanket ceremonies last year at Northfield High School, and it was an incredibly moving experience that honored the culture of these two families. And that is due to Sybil's efforts and really raising awareness, not only for our families and kids, but also our staff and the wider community about what, what these students bring to our, to our community and to our school district and how we can honor what they bring and the strengths that they bring to our community. So I just want to, again, give a shout out to Sybil because this is all because of her efforts to connect with families. We have had two American Indian Parent Advisory Committee meetings this year. They're not super well-attended, but they're robust meetings. And again, another way to connect and hear and present what it is we plan on doing with this American Indian aid. So at the December meeting, we did go over the American Student Indian Outcomes, American Indian Student Outcomes, and showed these exact slides to our parents. So what you're looking at here is the reading MCA results over the past four years. And the green line is the American Indian student cohort in Northfield for that year. So that's their proficiency rate meets or exceeds on, on the MCA. The comments from our parents at that meeting were like, oof, what is happening at the state level? Because that gray line is how American Indians are performing across the state. So while nobody was happy with the 50, 40, 59, 52, we'd all like to raise that, they were really struck by the state performance. Our cohort taking the MCA in any given year for the American Indian demographic is quite small. So we will never share grade level results with you because that cell size is, is very much below 10 in a single grade level. So that's why you're seeing the overall district reading results. So yes, we have work to do. Parents have again contributed their ideas to, to Sybil as we develop this plan about how we can raise achievement levels, and, and we're putting that plan into action. In math, look a little bit better. But again, the families were struck by that gray line, that state performance. So we are far exceeding Native American performance at the state level, but we still see a gap between, between our white students and our Native American. But again, these are, these are pretty solid results. We just know we can do a little bit better. In terms of Ds and Fs, what you're looking at here, and shout out to Carrie Duba for updating this for us, for you, for this presentation tonight. But you're looking at the percentage of kids earning Ds and Fs, 23, 24, quarter four in semester two, and 24, 24, 25 year to date. So again, you see a gap. We see improvement from 23, 24 to quarter one, 24, 25. We, we are just now posting semester one grades, so we'll be able to update that. So, so we do see improvement, but we do still see a gap. And I know Sybil works really closely with our American Indian students at the high school to try to get supports in place so they can find success in their coursework. Attendance rates year to date, again, average attendance rate, so the percentage of kids showing up every day on your left, and then the average and median days absent for American Indian versus white students. Again, the average is often brought up by outliers, which is why we also show the median. So seven days versus six days. Again, we're trying to eliminate the gap. So we're, we're doing what we can to make sure that all of our kids are here every day. Is that me here? Huh, it's me? Okay. February 17th, it's coming up right around the corner. We have a staff professional development day, and we are really excited that we were able to use American Indian aid to bring Anton Troyer to our district. So if you haven't heard him, he's a phenomenal speaker. I heard him at Content Books in December. He was at the Understand Native PD Day that many of our teachers went to last year. So he is, his session title is Education for All in the Age of Racial Reckoning. He really brings what I say is a message of hope, right? He acknowledges that, you know, there are some things in the past that are difficult and challenging, but he, he's really, what can we do moving forward? What tools do we have to offer our teachers and our staff? And how can we all do better to help our kids feel seen and heard and able to achieve their potential in our, in our classrooms? So we're really excited to have him here. Our ninth graders are reading his book right now, Where Wolves Don't Die. And we are really excited that the two teachers teaching that book are going to join us for lunch with, with Anton that day. But we are excited for that session. The other half of the day will be with Yolanda Williams, University of Minnesota professor. So we have a full day of learning, but we're really excited to bring Anton Troyer to our district to speak to our staff.
Questions? All right, thank you, Hope. Thank you, Sybil. And thank you, Sybil, for all your efforts and real impact that you're having. For members, do you have any questions or comments at this time?
Thank you both for the presentation. My question is within the MCA results slides. So we have, we're comparing to the state scores, and I'm wondering, they're very low, but I'm wondering if you have access to the achievement levels by district so that you could see if there's a district that, let's say, has scores in the 60s, 70s, 80s for that group that we can, you know, target in there and see, and see what programs they might have or what services they might be offering that might be very different than ours, but that's maybe attainable?
That is a great idea, and we can definitely do that because I have that super top secret file that's hidden on the MDE data analytics site. It, it feels like it's buried in there, but we actually do have access to every district's and really every school's performance. So it's going to be a question of finding one that has a cell size large enough, right, to report publicly. But they're out there, and I think that would be worth us looking into. So I appreciate that suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Hey, Mike.
Thanks for being here, Sybil and Hope. I have a question for you, Sybil. Now that you've been in this position for about a year and a half, can you talk a little bit about some of the positive experiences you've had with students, some of the growth you've seen with them, and even in your role, how you've maybe adapted in year two versus year one?
Sure. One of the things that I've really noticed is fostering the positive self-identity and connection with other students. Some of it was not knowing who the other native students were, maybe in their class or even within the building and even with, with the littles. So part of the meetings with the parent meetings, we have a component now where we do family engagement. So the littles have an opportunity meeting with other littles, and that's been really beneficial, and that has really bolstered their self-esteem. Another positive aspect is seeing the talents of our young native youth and fostering that. We have really gifted artists, and so we're going to have an opportunity for our youth and families to participate in an activity, family engagement in April with John Sterner, who did the eagle sculpture. And so we're very excited to bring that for our families and youth.
And then what's something you've learned maybe in year two as you engage with the families, the students, or just with your role itself?
I think just ongoingly the importance of building relationships. And that's an ongoing process, yeah.
Anyone else question or comment?
I have a couple of, did you have a question? I have a couple easy questions for you. I think I saw Rosetta Stone was mentioned in one of the areas. And so the students were requesting Rosetta Stone services in their native tongues, or is it?
Yep. So some of the families and some, some of that was driven by students, but a lot of it was driven also by their families. The parents were, they said they want their children to learn their language, and they don't know how to speak the language, and we want to preserve that going forward.
Terrific. And then I wanted to hear more about, you have a goal of moving attendance from 76 to 90%. So that would be across a district, since we have students in various grades, I think, read in the report, 52 students. So what are some of the steps for addressing in the different age groups?
Doing outreach. We also have at the high school mentors, assigned mentors, and just doing positive messaging as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hey, thank you so much, Hope. Thank you, Sybil.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have our bond pre-sale report, and Jeff Sealy with Ellers Inc. will be here to present and report the first Northfield High School construction project bond sale and request approval of that resolution authorizing the sale of the building funds for $39 million. This bond sale is the first of two, with the second issue being planned in 2027. Welcome, Jeff.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. And you have, you should have a sale day report in front of you, so I'm going to talk a little bit about that. So congratulations on the passage of your November bond referendum.
Just to be clear, Jeff was saying the sale day report was in your packet. It's not one of the pieces of paper that we have on the table in front of you.
Oh, okay, okay. So what we're going to talk a little bit tonight about is the first step in the financing process. So of course, the first step of this process is the election process that is now in the books. So the next step is issuing your financing. And then, of course, financing flows into the construction phase of it. So I'm going to highlight some things in the sale day report here. We have tonight an authorization, a resolution to authorize the issuance of $39 million in general obligation, school building bonds, that's Series 2025A, because of the year it's being issued. And as you mentioned, there's actually two phases to this financing. This is the first phase. The next phase will be roughly $80 million in the spring of 2027. We looked at your estimated construction cash flow, and this first $39 million will bring you into summer of 2027. So we're lining up. Of course, we can adjust it if need be, the timing of bond number two also. Some of these documents in here focus on the first bond and some the combined amounts. So of course, it goes back to authorization of your November 5th, 2024 successful referendum. The debt on the bonds will be, or the payments, the debt service will be paid through a property tax levy. It has, this particular bond is a 23-year term, and it's callable February 1, 2033. Callable simply means that that is the opportunity to refinance it at that time, should rates be low enough to save money. The total term when we roll in bond number two will be 30 years, okay? So this one's going to be 23 years. Then two years later, we're going to issue the second one, and that's going to be 28 for a total of 30-year bond term. It will be rolled in the state credit enhancement program. That's simply the program where the state steps in, should there be any default, that gets you a higher rating, and that rating will reduce the interest rate that you'll pay. You do have, well, that credit enhanced rating will be Standard and Poor's AAA, and your underlying rating is excellent at a double A plus. Underlying means without the state, it's your rating on these. And we anticipate that that will follow through. You will go through a rating process, but you guys have a terrific rating. So we anticipate having very good results on this. We'll do a competitive bid process nationally. We'll advertise it and collect bids. And then what we'll do is we'll bring those to the board at, on the day that we collect those. We're working with Dorsey and Whitney as your bond attorney, and Bond Trust as the paying agent, and S&amp;P Global will be the rating agency. So on February 24th, that's when we're going to take bids on this. We will take those bids, bring the results to you, and then you'll have a, what we call an award resolution. That is a resolution where you will award the sale of the bonds to the winning bidder. That is a resolution where you will award the sale of the bonds to the winning bidder. In the meantime, we'll be working with Matt and Val to put together information for your official statement and for your rating and so forth. So, I'm going to flip to the attachment, page one, as your sources and uses. Now, you had three bond questions that passed for a total of $121,800,000 in authority of bonds. We're going to be issuing $2 million less than that after this because you had those donations. So, the first bond is $39 million, the second one will be about $80,800,000. And that'll give you about 100 and, over $122,000, I'm sorry, $122 million for your bond project. This particular bond, we're going to, since the bond number two won't have payments in the first two years, we're going to have higher payments in these first two years. Then, we're going to drop them in year three because that's when we're going to fold in and coordinate the payments of bond number two and bring up the total amount. So, when you look at the attachment, page two, you're going to see that you're going to have roughly $3.8 million in principal payments this coming year, or '26 and '27. And then, you're going to see it drops to 700 and some thousand, and then even lower after that. Well, those gaps, that drop is going to be filled in by the payments on the second bond. And we're anticipating about 4.4% interest on this. Now, you've already levied the tax last December for that first payment. So, anything that happens with this bond, with selling the bond and the results you have, you already levied that tax. So, it's not going to change the tax impact for this particular year. Where a tax impact may change is when we get all the way through the second issuance. And then, those future years after that might have a little different tax impact. Of course, the focus of the structure and everything is to bring everything in under what you told the public during the election. The next page, it's really small, a lot of numbers, but that just in that proposed new school building bonds column, a little bit towards the right. That is with both bonds all folded in. And then, you can see way to the right with your existing bonds and some of your other levies, capital levies, and the new bonds. You have a very level tax impact as far as a tax rate. You can see it better on the very last page. You can see the bottom bars, the gray bars, that's your existing debt converted to a tax rate, of course, through 2055. And then, you have a capital projects levy that assumes that that's going to continue. Actually, the capital projects levy, we have it continuing all the way through the chart. And then, your lease levy is so small that it's really not even showing up. But the gray hash is the new bond, both bonds. So, you can see, we leveled it off, kept it steady for easy planning. And then, it looks like you'll probably have a little small drop in your total payments in 2048. So, that is what it looks like moving forward with bond number one here. So.
Thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome.
Do you have any questions or comments right now?
Thanks, Jeff. When you're calculating kind of the 4.4% or interest rate, is that just kind of where markets are right now?
Actually, it's about four right now. So, there's a little bit of cushion built in that. So, as we go through over the next handful of weeks, if the markets change a little bit, at least a moderate amount of cushion is built in there.
And the timing when it goes to sale versus when the board approves it, that rate stays static? Is that how that works, or?
What's going to happen is when we take the bids at your February meeting and we bring it, that's when you will be locked in. And then, you'll actually get the bond proceeds, so that's February 24. We take the bids that morning, that night it will all be locked in. And on March 20 is when the bond proceeds become available. There will be no change in rate or structure or anything as of February 24. It can change up till that point, though.
That's good, thank you.
Question or comment? All right, thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Right, item C is our financial forecast. Director Finance of our register will provide an updated financial forecast with an anticipated budget reduction target for 2025, 2026 school year.
Good evening. All right. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about the financial forecast and the upcoming recommendations and plan for that. So, as we talk about in every presentation, we always start centering on the vision of preparing every student for lifelong success by developing critical thinkers who are curious and ready to engage in our society. The budget is our plan and how to execute this vision. So, we are making sure we are resourcing the items that we say are important to the district. And so, that is the culmination of all of those things pulled together. Stewardship is obviously one of the strategic commitments, primary for my department. And so, we will responsibly manage our personnel finances, property, time, and environmental impact. And so, I think it's important to remind people that it's not just about the dollars and cents. There's lots of aspects to stewardship that play into this forecast. So, just to give you a highlight of what we're going to talk about, we're going to talk a little bit about the financial cycle, just to kind of re-ground everybody in what our current process looks like. We're going to talk about what we do know. And then, we're going to talk a lot about things that we're not 100% sure about. Our enrollment projection, some of the assumptions we're making for next year, for '25, '26, and beyond. The budget presentation timeline, so when you can expect to see me and other directors presenting the budgets for the coming school year. And then, just a little bit, a friendly reminder about the re-imagine Northfield High School bond and how that relates to the conversation we're having. So, for the financial cycle, we are in the upper-left quadrant right now. We are doing the financial projection. So, we've done the revised budget that was presented in December. We're looking at the legislative outlook and making the assumptions that we'll talk through tonight. This is really the foundation for our adopted budget process that will happen this spring. And the data that got us there is really the finalized audit, the finalized fund balances that rolled into the revised budget that's really setting up the presentation for tonight and all of the data that we're going to look at. What it does mean and what I like about this cycle is that we are at least four times a year checking and rechecking and evaluating where we're at and getting updated information. It's not a one and done, here's the budget, and we don't look at it again. That would not be responsible. So, we want to make sure we're checking things and making sure that we know where we're at and where we think we're going. So, some of the known parameters, obviously, we have the strategic commitment that's helping guide some of these decisions and assumptions that we're making. We know that we ended the '23, '24 school year with a 13.83% unassigned fund balance. We talked a little bit about that in December. The total dollar amount was actually on track with what we expected, but the percentage was below 14 because our total expenditures were higher than anticipated. And then, the '24, '25 revised budget that was approved in December has a planned deficit of about $592,000. We also know that we are dealing with ongoing and incremental declining enrollment. One of the things that I think I'll talk a little bit more about to help the board and anyone listening understand why that makes it more challenging, and I'll give an example on our enrollment slide. Every school district in the state and probably the country has roughly 80% of their budget to salary and benefits. We are here doing good things for kids, and we need people to do that. So, that is something common you will see across the state. We also know that enrollment is a major driver for us. So, 70% of our total revenue sources, regardless of their formula, are enrollment-driven in some capacity. So, when we have declining enrollment, we are incrementally losing revenue. I'm going to apologize, I'm like on the tail end of a sinus infection, so hopefully, it's not terrible. The budget priorities are in place from the 2022 process that we went, when we did our first priority-based budget. And those, again, are one of the data points that we're using when we're developing the forecasts and the budgets. We also know that our largest source of revenue has continued to lose ground to inflation over the last 20 years. We'll talk a little bit more about that. And there's a variety of legislative impacts that we need to take into consideration. So, as a reminder, these are the budget priorities that were set in 2022. There were more than 70 staff, students, community members who participated in that process to tell us what were the most important things that the district was doing and what should we make sure we're prioritizing in the budget. As with anything in the budget, some of these can actually be in conflict from time to time. And so, we take all of those into consideration as we're moving forward and making decisions. So, this is, I put a little more detail in this presentation, so there's some charts and things that you maybe haven't seen in the past, just because I wanted to provide some additional context for it, for you as the board and for anybody who's at home watching or going through the documents later. So, this is just our K-12 enrollment. So, I want to be clear, that's slightly different than our overall weighted enrollment that is used for enrollment. But this is the vast majority of our enrollment. And so, as you can see, the '18, '19 school year was actually our last peak year. And we are, again, ongoing incrementally declining, which you can see, the projection shows that the middle school will actually have slightly increasing enrollment over the next five years or so. But both elementary and the high school have slightly declining enrollment. So, this calculation shows all of it, including the early childhood special education that is included in those formulas. And so, the bottom blue line is the adjusted pupil unit. So, that's what the formulas, that the 70% of our revenue, that's the number that's being used to calculate those. And so, you can see the year-over-year decrease. One of the things that I want to call out, just to help people understand, the actual decrease in pupil units from '24, '25 to '25, '26 is like 53.2 weighted pupil units or roughly 46 students. And so, when we look at that across the board, that's roughly three and a half students per grade. So, it's not as simple. Roughly, a student generates about $10,000. So, we're talking about potentially losing over $500,000 of revenue for three, an average of three and a half students per grade. So, it's not a situation where we can just say, we're going to reduce these five teachers and have the same class size because they don't all fall in that. And losing three students isn't the equivalent of losing an entire classroom. And so, it doesn't line up that way. And so, when it's incremental, year-over-year, that's the problem that we're facing is it's very difficult to do a reduction that doesn't feel significant and impactful year-over-year, if that makes sense. Just makes it a little more challenging than if we were just losing a large number of students in a single grade, for example, which is not ever how it works. The other factors that play into the declining enrollment are declining birth rate. So, this is something we have experienced in Rice County as well as across the state. And my understanding is across the nation, people are just having less babies. The Rice County birth rate is what we have used as our metric. We've, on average, brought in between 30 and 35% of the Rice County births year-over-year. That has declined 12% in just the last six years, with it projecting to continue to decline. And as we all know, the housing in our school district boundaries is also challenging. So, as of the 15th of this month, there were only 28 single-family homes in our entire 178-square-mile boundary. And I would assume the typical, most of them are not what most would consider affordable for a single-family home. And so, those factors together are presenting a difficult front for our enrollment. It's hard for new students to move in if they wanted to, and we just have less students being born. So, we'll talk a little bit about these assumptions. I put, again, some extra detail in the narrative just to help provide additional context. All of the assumptions are based on the data that I have at the time, what we know and what we think we know. I can already tell you, I'm going to give you some news that I found out this morning that's not playing into this financial assumption. And so, again, we, we're doing the best we can with what we have. So, what we do assume right now is that the per-pupil funding, which is our largest source of funding, that's 50% of our total revenue, is projected to increase about 2.4% for next year. We have it at the minimum allowed in statute for each year beyond that at 2%. The statute locks it between 2 and 3. So, even if inflation is 5, we're going to get 3. But if it's anywhere between 2 and 3, we'll obviously get what the calculation is. So, according to MDE, 2.4 is their most current estimate of what they expect to provide. Declining enrollment, we talked about that. So, I won't go into more detail about that right now. We have an inflationary increase on our referendum that I think is a little over 3% for that calculation for next year. But that obviously continues to increase. A 3% increase in special education funding, again, this is based on your prior year expenditures, so it can flux from year to year. But what we actually heard this morning is that the statewide calculation for special ed aid exceeds what's allowed. And so, my current understanding is that the state is planning to prorate special ed. So, instead of getting 100% of what they said they would give us, we're going to get 95%. We haven't had official communication out from MDE, but that's our current understanding. And 95% means about $500,000 less in revenue than what I had in this projection. So, again, it's as good as the data I have the day that I'm providing it. Federal funding, we're choosing to hold that flat. All of the Esther funding, COVID funding has, is done. We have used all of that in the ways that we've talked about. And we are assuming status quo for the remainder, which is our title funding, a little bit for special ed. Those are the big ones, and we have one grant that's federally funded. So, we're assuming that will all be held flat. This model assumes that activity fees and participation are held flat. And it also assumes that there's no additional funding for the summer unemployment. So, as you recall, we've talked about this a few times. The summer unemployment was due two summers ago. And this past summer was about $217,000 for the district. The state had implemented kind of a one-time funding measure. And when that pot of money was spent, that was it, unless they do something moving forward in this legislative session. The money only covered 90% of what we experienced and incurred this last summer. So, the district subsidized that by about 20, a little over $20,000. I'm anticipating that will increase because as we submit salary increases, what they're eligible for increases. And so, we have, on the expenditure side, an increase built in that, but no revenue plan. Now, if the legislature does do something different, that will change this, but at the current time, we're not anticipating that. We are planning for some reduced interest revenue. We've had an outstanding an outstanding run with our interest revenue, which we will take every day of the week. But that is also a pretty, can be volatile variable. And so we don't want to rely on that in our revenue calculation. And so that's kind of staged down. Any increase we do have in that obviously will help support the budget. And then we're going to continue to see an increase in our OPEV levy, which is our other post-employment's benefit. That covers all of our retiree contractual obligations for their access to health and dental. I believe we're going to continue to see an increase in our number of retirees. We have a I would say, I don't want to say aging staff, but a mature senior staff. And so that is something we're anticipating, again, not uncommon across districts in the state. Especially as we see the market continue to be challenging. There's less people going into teaching. And so this is kind of a trend that we're anticipating, as well as we know that health and dental costs continue to just increase. And so we, we do get to levy for some of that. So that will increase, but also the expenditures are increasing, which you'll see on that slide as well. I want to make sure I didn't miss anything here. So this chart just shows you kind of the revenue in our big buckets. So the blue, dark blue is the basic formula. So that's the straight $7,200, I think it's 7281 right now, per pupil is our largest funding source. The orange is our operating referendum, which is voter approved, plus our local optional revenue. If you recall, several years ago, they took about $424 off the operating referendum and made it into a state authorized levy aid combo. And so those two components make up the orange. And then the rest is everything else. Federal, local, all of the things. So what I want to call out on this slide is for 25, 26, even though I said we had a 2.4% on our state aid, our largest revenue, a 3% built in for special education, the operating referendum inflationary factor was three or three and a half. We're looking at a 0.8% increase in our revenue. So that is the impact of the declining enrollment offsetting any of those increases as well as other things like the summer unemployment revenue falling off a conservative interest revenue adjustment. So all of those mean we're looking at a 0.8% increase in our total revenue. So for expenditures, again, I think the overall story for this is that it's coming from all angles, unfortunately, this year. So for salaries, the average for all employee groups is about 5%. Specifically for 26, the model drops down to about three and a half for the years following. It's assuming that we're keeping the same staffing ratios we have right now, which is a very common avenue for our financial forecast. Benefits are a pretty substantial increase. So TRA is a statutory requirement. It is increasing from 8.75% to nine and a half percent for the employer in fiscal '26. As of right now, our understanding is that it's static after that. They have been increasing it incrementally every year for the last five years, and this is the most substantial. The employer portion or employee portion is also increasing. Those both go into effect on July 1st. We are assuming a 5% increase in health each year, assuming similar participation in the program. We are getting to a point with our self-insured where it's starting to hopefully stabilize. The, the metrics are looking better than they have historically in the last several years. And so that's been hopefully can continue on that trend. I'm also anticipating a slight increase in our dental insurance. So our dental insurance, we had not increased those contribution rates for since we went self-insured in 2005. So several years. That is getting to a point now where we did increase it, but not the employer contribution. So that increase was solely on the employees. Now, again, the dental premium is much smaller than the health premium, so that's not as significant as an impact on employees, but it's still something that we anticipate likely needing to increase slightly. I do have a 3% built in for summer unemployment. Again, that is really based on who's accessing it and what their wages are with unemployment. That's all calculated through DED, and so we don't get a say in how that's calculated at all. The other post-employment benefits, again, we talked a little bit about this on the revenue, but I have a 6% increase in that. That's going to include both severance payments when staff retire, when they're eligible for it, as well as the actual health and contributions for existing retirees and any contributions that go towards that. The long view on the other post-employment benefits is that benefit is, has been sunset. So anyone hired after 2009 is no longer eligible for that. And so the further we get out, the less this will be accessed. But for right now, we're still still have quite a few people that are eligible for it. And then in addition, the paid family medical leave tax, this takes effect January 1st of '26. So basically half through, halfway through next fiscal year. Currently, the state website doesn't actually list a percentage. Their initial percentage in statute was increased very shortly after they originally did it to a 0.88. I think it was 0.7 when it was proposed. And then it was projected to 0.88, and they don't actually have a number on their website right now. So I'm using the 0.88 as the last data point that I had. A minimum of 50% has to be paid by the employer. And so we're assuming 0.44%. Again, it's new, so I'm not 100% sure how the calculation will go, but it's based on your payroll tax, so I took our total payroll. That will be approximately $175,000 for the district, not including the employee portion. So it's 175 for us, and then there's an employee portion on top of that that will get paid to the state to manage or to fund that program. There is no revenue that I'm aware of associated with that, so that's just an add to our budget. And again, because it's a payroll tax, those will increase as we increase salaries, similar to the way TRA and FICA work. And then non-salary, we have about three and a half percent across the board. This is, I would say, a little higher than we've typically done, mostly because of our concerns about inflationary and procurement pressures. This has been an ongoing concern. And we, again, are seeing it in multiple facets across the district. Property liability was a 26% increase for our 1-1 renewal. That was a total of $67,000. And that was a combination, not of just a straight rate increase, but also because the building valuations of what we're having covered increased so substantially because of inflation across the market. So it's both our property being covered, going up, and so that amount increasing as well as a premium increase. So there's just lots of factors coming altogether in an untimely fashion for the district at this point. All right. For, for staffing, I was going to mention, we did have some positions that were added. And so part of the change from the projection last year to the projection this year is just additional staffing. You might recall special services was here because we had 12 additional students at Spring Creek that we hadn't anticipated for special education. We added some English learner support in 22, 23. So all of those things combined. And again, anytime you're forecasting, it rolls and that those variances can compound. I really like this chart, not because you can see all the tiny numbers, but the visual, I think, is important. So the blue and orange are salary and benefits. So as I mentioned, as part of our known parameters, 80% of the budget is salary and benefits, and this clearly shows how that how that grows. The gray and green is really our non-salary. For 25, 26, I think it's 10.7 million total. And then the purple is the restricted. So that's capital, long-term facility maintenance, really the kind of that's all in and out, so untouchable in terms of anything we would consider for our budget reduction target. And so I think it's just important to note the percentages on the bottom going across are very different than the ones that you saw on the revenue slide. And they actually put them together in this chart to show the blue is the revenue. And so when your revenue is only increasing at 0.8% or 1.4%, that declining enrollment again is, is bringing that down. But your expenditures are increasing from all sides, both from a very competitive labor market and needs to retain and have high-quality staff. The benefits, the statutory requirements, all of those things are playing together. Those numbers are too far apart, so we need to adjust the budget in a way that is responsible moving forward. Another one of the primary financial assumptions is that our fund, fund balances goal as a district is 14%. Again, just to remind everyone, that calculation is our general fund expenditures, excluding operating capital, long-term facility maintenance, student activities, and scholarships. Those are all restricted sources where the revenue has to be used for something very specific. We cannot have a negative fund balance in those, so those are managed very tightly year over year. And then the, there's different categories of our fund balance. So we're taking the unassigned fund balance. There's also restricted and assigned. But this calculation is specifically looking at the unassigned, which is obviously the most flexible for use. And that's the calculation we've used for a couple of years. Another assumption in this model that you're, that you can see is it assumes a slight spend down of the ALC and targeted services fund balance. So you might recall, we used our Esther funding to expand the community school model to Bridgewater and Spring Creek. Part of that was some intentional planning on increasing our targeted services numbers to generate additional revenue to help support that. And so we built that fund balance up in anticipation of the federal funding falling off and being spent down. And so now we're going to access that hopefully slowly, so that we can manage that program for, and make it self-sustaining. But that was always the intention is to, to build it up, to make sure we have some additional time to, to see that program through. So this is the summary of all of those things that I just talked about. So it has what happened, our audited data for '23, '24, what we have for our revised budget for '24, '25, and then three years worth of projection. I've said this before, but anytime you're looking at a school district financial forecast, it always looks in year four and five like the sky is falling. And I felt like three years was good enough for, for looking challenging because we're always assuming conservative revenue from the state, managing appropriate wage increases for our staff. And so it's, it's a constant battle in terms of forecasting for the district. So right now, again, a $592,000 deficit for this year, projecting about 12.2% unassigned fund balance. But all of the factors that we talked about for '25, '26 are really putting us at about a $4.5 million deficit is what's projected currently. Now, there are some things that the state could do this legislative session that would change that. But we cannot plan for that at this time because we don't know what's going to happen and nothing's for sure. And so if all of those things happen, the way I'm projecting, we would, we're projecting to end at about 4.9% unassigned fund balance, which is obviously well below our target of 14. And so in the narrative, we are recommending a target of about $6 million for the budget reduction. That was an incredibly difficult decision to come to, that dollar amount in terms of the budget and understanding what that can do. However, we have to be responsible stewards as a district. And this is what responsible financial management looks like. There's lots of factors at play that we have no control over. Some that we do. But we need to make sure that we are responsible with all of the resources that our community entrusts to us as well as the state. And so the $6 million is what's recommended. The budget teams are scheduled. Oh, I'm jumping ahead already. Sorry, I'm going to take a step back. This chart, again, we've showed this many times, but I still think it's important to note the, the per pupil funding, again, is 50% of our total revenue. So we have zero control over 50% of our revenue. I just want to make that clear. It is a dollar amount times our students. So when our students are declining, we're having less revenue. And since 2003, if the state had only just increased it with inflation, we would have $1,364 more per pupil. We're at 7,281 right now. That equates to five point, almost 5.7 million dollars for Northfield. Now, there's lots of reasons and things that go into this conversation and calculation, but I do not think it's a coincidence that we're talking about $6 million when inflation continues to be a challenge. Again, not just for the district, but for the state and every other entity. But that's an important metric for us. So in terms of the calendar, the next board, the next meeting will be the operating capital and LTFM budget. Again, that's pretty standard. We have you approve it at the second meeting in February, and that really allows us to be proactive in getting projects set for those restricted funds and making sure that we're not late to the game on getting contractors, since the summer is a very tight window in which every school district in the state is trying to get all their projects done. February 11th through the 25th is the priority-based budget team meetings that are scheduled. There's three meetings currently scheduled. I do want to just highlight, we will ask the teams about the, the previous priorities and have them reaffirm them, suggest anything different, just to make sure that we're starting on the same page. March 10th will be debt service and internal service. Internal service fund is the self-insured health and dental. March 11th is the priority-based community, budget community meeting. So taking what's recommendations from the February meetings and offering the community at large a chance to provide input. April 14th would be those proposed reductions in front of the board for first review, technically second after the March 11th, but just for further conversation and April 28th would be child nutrition and community services, and then asking the board to finalize any recommendations. And then May 12th would be the general fund budget as well as the construction fund budget. We are going to have that again, so that'll be a new add to our budget book this year. And then May 27th being the target for accepting or approving all of the budgets for the next fiscal year. So one thing I do just So one thing I do just want to highlight, it's a common question that we're probably going to hear, is why are we proposing a six-million-dollar budget reduction when we just had the voters approve a hundred-and-twenty-one-million-dollar bond? So I want to be very clear that our operating budget is completely separate than any of the bond funds that are for construction. Those needs at the high school are going to be there regardless. The funds will help offset that and allow us to update those. We cannot use that for anything in our operating fund. We cannot use it for salaries or benefits or supplies. And we are at the max that our voters can allow. So there is nothing else to ask our voters for. And so I just want to be clear, they're two very legally separate pots of money. And so we cannot use them for general operations. So I just wanted to call that out to provide clarity for the board and the community because that is something that we hear. There's a catchphrase that a lot of people will use that bonds are for building and levies are for learning. Again, two different pots of money and two very different purposes. So that is a lot of information. And I just want to reiterate, overall, we are currently in a strong financial position. And we want to continue to be in a strong financial position. So we are being responsible and making hard choices to ensure that we can be in that position and have the resources we want and need to provide for our students. Sorry. I'm like not used to talking quite this much. Six billion is a lot of money. It is roughly eight percent of the budget. But I would like to take the opportunity to reframe that. We are very blessed in this community with resources from our voters. We have access to more funds than a lot of school districts do. And so I want to just remind people that we're going to be able to keep ninety-two percent, ninety-two cents on the dollar of the great things that we're doing for kids. I don't want to underscore that it's going to be challenging. But again, it is fiscally responsible. And I'd much rather respond thoughtfully to make sure we have a plan moving forward than to be in a really difficult position where we have to respond emotionally and reactionary. So that is all I have, I believe. So if you have questions, I will gladly answer them. There was a lot of additional detail in your narrative, including a detailed financial chart. So just know that that's there for your reference if you need it. But I will gladly answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Val. Thank you for your excellent stewardship over our district and all the effort that you put into keeping us healthy. And thank you to Dr. Hellman as well for your leadership in our district finances. It's a serious situation, and I appreciate the reflections that you shared this evening. Board members, do you have any questions or comments at this time?
Well, thanks. I appreciate that. A little more to talk about, probably. You know, in terms of, maybe we can jump back to that five-year. That's the three-year budget slide, if we've got that. Take a look. And there we go. Yep. So if I look at kind of the four-and-a-half, so what I heard you say was that based on the state's coverage, ninety-five percent coverage of special education, that's probably actually closer to five. Is that where you're, would I be right in doing the math on the back of the?
Say that one, oh, the deficit. Actually, my understanding is that that's for this year, that they're prorating. So this year's deficit would be a little over a million. Yep. Now, again, I don't have that formally in writing from MDE, but that is my current understanding.
Well, let's just go with the numbers on the graph here, a chart here that we have. So looking at that bottom line, the six-point-two-million roughly for the twenty-five, twenty-six projected, that assumes the fund balance of fourteen percent, correct? Okay. And if we, let's say we've met that number, we figured out sort of where we get that in that twenty-five, twenty-six budget, what would that look like for the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget if we carried that forward? What kind of additional deficit would we have in kind of twenty-six, twenty-seven?
In twenty-six, twenty-seven from the special ed change?
You know, just overall, let's say we balance the books, we get to zero, it looks good. What would that number look like based on? Help me read the table there.
So the fourteen percent, so you can see that target. The minimum assigned, which is right below that, is taking fourteen percent times our expenditures up above. Actually, it's not the number above because that includes our capital and restricted things. So it's slightly less than that. I want to be transparent in case anyone's going to go do the math. It won't come out that way. But it's doing our calculation of what we are expecting for the unassigned. And then the over/under is just what we... So if you go right above the four-point-nine, that three-point-three-million is what is projected to be an unassigned. And that's four-point-nine percent rather than fourteen. Fourteen percent would be nine-point-five. And so there's a six-million-dollar variance there. And so are you asking if the special ed, or if we balance?
If we balance the budget, let's say, which we will, obviously, but what do we project then sort of as a deficit for twenty-six, twenty-seven based on that? Maybe you can't do.
I was going to say, I'm not sure I'm comfortable doing that math in my head because there's several variables. So it would depend on how we chose to balance the budget. You know, if it was mostly... So I ran a few different models, which I know everyone's surprised about. But anytime you're doing a reduction, doing it in the year, obviously extrapolates rather than a multi-year approach. And so depending on which categories we're doing the reduction really depends on what happens in the next fiscal year. So salaries have a three-and-a-half or four-percent increase, benefits are higher, you know, and supplies are three-and-a-half. Again, there's some things that you can do that are one-time savings. Some things are ongoing savings. So I don't feel super comfortable saying that out loud without running some models of what that could look like. But it would really depend on how we chose to balance the budget, if that makes sense.
It does. But there would be some value, right? I mean, it would, I mean, we anticipate a deficit in that twenty-six, twenty-seven year.
If we balanced, yes, only to zero, yes.
Fundamentally, my question, and I'm sure we'll, yeah, we can look at those models.
Yep. You'll be lucky enough to do that.
Just looking at the timeframe to that slide, just had a quick question on that. I don't know if we put it on the timeline slide.
That one?
Yeah. So just remind me who makes up the priority-based budget teams that'll meet on the eleventh? Dr. Hellman or Val?
So that's open for application right now. So likely, anyone and everyone who applies will be placed on a team. There will be administrators, staff members are obviously invited. We typically have student representatives from DYC. Really, I think the application's open to anyone. And my experience thus far is that we are usually asking more people to help join. It's not a super-popular committee to be on, but an important one nonetheless. So.
So as of just this afternoon, we, as you know, the last board meeting, we talked about this. We released that budget team application form. We have eleven people who have submitted as of today. Something else that we've done based on some board member feedback is on the form as well. It also allowed an individual to nominate someone else to say, hey, here's someone else who I think would be good to you to call. So far, we have no nominations of other people, but we at least have eleven people who have signed up. And as Val said, we'll be sending out again this week and doing additional intentional recruitment. So if board members have people who you know, who you think would be good for this, you want to reach out to me and give me those names, I can certainly make personal contact with them. So we are going to have a few more teams, and I think that's important to share tonight, too. Val, would you talk through the teams? Teams tend to be, we try to have between probably eight and ten people on each team. There are some teams that could be smaller, some that could be larger. But would you just talk about how we're going to structure the budget teams this time?
Sure. So in the 2022 model, when we first rolled that out, we had an elementary team, a secondary team, and district services, which you saw in that budget priority slide. One of the things that we've reflected on since then, we are planning to pull out special services because there is just a different model and requirement there. And I think having a team that can be a little more specialized on that topic will be important. And then we're also planning to pull out activities. And so we want to make sure that the teams can truly focus on a kind of a tighter area of the budget to provide more in-depth and detailed recommendations. So there will be five total budget areas, elementary, secondary, activities, district services, and special services this time. That cover it? Okay. Other questions?
Just one for Dr. Hellman. But do you anticipate, I assume, we'll have some board working session following that? And I don't think we have any dates for those yet.
We don't have a work session set up as of yet. But depending on how it shakes out, I could see us having something for sure.
Yeah, similar to, I think, the last time we did this. Okay. I will cede the floor.
All right, Jenny, you had a question?
Thanks, Claudia. I just have a few questions for Val and then maybe one for Dr. Hellman. Thank you, Val, for the presentation. So in the narrative, it was mentioned, one of the most significant challenges we face is the underfunded and unfunded state mandates, which I'm very familiar, unfortunately, with the underfunded mandates. But can you speak of the unfunded mandates?
So currently, the summer unemployment would be one example of that. There was one-time funding, but it is now gone and spent. And so we don't have any future funding for that. And that's, again, this last summer was two-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand dollars, which will obviously increase as salaries increase. And so that's one example. There's a variety of things with the REED Act. We have been very intentional in this district to try and do it in a cost-neutral manner. But there are requirements to certify teachers. Now, there was some funding, so I don't want to say it's not funded at all. I want to be really clear. But ongoing, this is something we have to make sure that our staff are trained on. And so if there's future funding or what that looks like in our district, we have an intentional model for all staff. We're taking our PLC time on Wednesday mornings to make sure it's cost-neutral. But that's a potentially ongoing one. I'm trying to think of any more. The summer employment is the big one. The paid family medical leave is a new tax that has no current funding source. And again, that's not school district-specific, that's statewide. And so all organizations are going to experience that if they're over a certain employee account, I think. But those are a few of the bigger examples. The paid family medical leave tax is estimated to be a hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand. So those just keep... And again, that's a payroll tax, so it's going to continue to compound as our salaries compound.
Understanding historically from that aspect, would you anticipate those would all remain unfunded in the future?
The, I would anticipate the paid family medical leave, yes. I think another example, I don't know if I mentioned this, the TRA increases. That's a state statute. There was never funding to support that. But when they started the incremental increases, there is a small amount of revenue that we do get to help offset that, but it doesn't nearly cover the whole cost. So we can call that a partially funded. But this is a very significant increase. And so I don't anticipate additional revenue. We understand that the state's forecast is also looking dismal. So they have to balance priorities, just like we are. And so I don't anticipate additional revenue. We can hope, but I'd rather have a plan of action should it not happen.
Sure. And then during your enrollment projections, can you help me understand how you go through your projections and come up with the enrollment decrease affecting only or mainly elementary and the high school? Is that, do you just take historical data and compile that?
Yep. So there's a couple of calculations that go into it. So we use cohort survival. So we assume that if you were in grade five, you're going to grade six, but based on our historical ratio. So Northfield is a little unique in that lots of districts look at their outgoing 12th grade compared to their kindergarten. And that always looks terrible for us because we have two charter schools in St. Dominique. And so we see a bump between fifth and sixth grade because we see several Prairie Creek students come in, potentially some from other districts. And then we also see a bump typically at ninth grade because St. Dominique only goes through eighth grade. And so those are our typical increase points. And so the metric is looking at how many students did we have in fifth grade? On average, do they all come? Do we get ninety-seven percent? Do we get a hundred-and-five percent? And so there's a ratio at each grade level that gets extrapolated on that. And it looks, we, I actually, we run like seven different calculations. So we look at a three-year weighted, a four-year weighted, five-year weighted. And so I think we're doing a four-year weighted, if I'm recalling off the top of my head. I don't know that I put that in the narrative, but I'm pretty sure we're using the four-year weighted. So it looks at our last four years and what our trends have been, which obviously have all been declining, have been for the last six or seven, and then extrapolates it forward. And then it assumes an average bump at sixth and ninth grade based on what we've seen historically as well. And then kindergarten enrollment is typically, there's a few calculations we can run for that as well. We have, in my tenure here, always used the percentage of births that we've seen materialize in kindergarten. So we average thirty to thirty-five percent. It's usually around thirty-one. It's varied a little bit, but of the births in Rice County. One question I have received is, have we ever considered using Dakota County just because Northfield Hospital is in Dakota County? My, we asked about this, I don't know, two or three years ago. And my understanding is it likely wouldn't make a difference in the calculation because we're seeing declining births across the state. But I will look into it a little more because it was a recent question, and I want to make sure I have an actual detailed response for the person who asked it. And so historically, though, we've seen thirty-one percent of Rice County. And so, and that's been year-over-year consistent. And so that's what we've used as our metric. And so, again, the increase in middle school is based on our current elementary, our anticipated bump from sixth grade. But then we've had some bigger classes that are in the high school that are going to be coming off and anticipating a lower kindergarten class. We've had a couple of lower kindergarten classes that are now moving through. So the bigger classes at elementary will hit middle school. So it's kind of a, kind of a puzzle. But for the most part, it's a projection that takes multiple data points. What happened in the last four years historically and kindergarten. And it could be wrong. I would love it if it was wrong, and we actually had a hundred more students, that'd be great. But typically, it's been pretty close when we've used that model. And so we'll see what happens. But that's generally how it's calculated.
Okay, thank you. That helps a lot to clarify. And then regarding the property liability insurance increase, is that our only insurance that you've seen a large hike?
So we, for, so property liability is our entire insurance outside of like health and dental. The other one we have is work comp. And we actually saw a decrease in our work comp because we went and changed our carrier. And so that was, I want to say, a $100,000 savings was that calculation. Again, we had been with the same carrier for a couple, quite a few years. And so hopefully, that should trend in the right direction. But our health premiums have increased, dental premiums increased. But property liability has increased, I would say substantially, the last three years. My understanding is the reinsurance market is driving a lot of that. There are, the vendor we are with has stayed in the school market, but no one else bid on our insurance. So my understanding is there's light at the end of the tunnel and that they're anticipating better rates for next year. Certainly not going backwards, but not double-digit increases is the expectation for next year with some changes in the reinsurance market is my understanding.
So that would be better rates with that particular carrier?
Yep.
And do you also see that it would open us up to other carriers?
Hopefully. I, I'm not going to pretend to be an expert on insurance, but my understanding is the insurance market is very challenging currently. Just a lot of the big companies have seen a lot of loss, I think, with all of the things we've seen in terms of natural disasters. And so there's just some, I think, other components at play that are causing some situational problems for us.
Thank you. And then, Dr. Hillman, I just have a question. With the team meetings application form to the community, is that on our website?
Yes, it would be on our website within our, from our last family update. So we can also add just a regular post about that. But we sent it out in our family update, and all of our family updates are also posted on the website.
Okay, so they would have to go into the
Right now, they would have to. So we'll, we'll post it on the website by itself tomorrow.
As maybe a banner-type style?
Yep, we can certainly do that.
It's just the easiest to find? And then is there a due date on that application?
There is, but I don't recall it. I think it was February 3rd.
That's coming up soon.
Yep. And we can, we will certainly, if people want to join us after February 3rd, we would be happy to have them. But we know if you don't put a deadline on it, that people put it off to the last minute.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else question or comment at this time? Okay, Ben?
Just one last one. Val, you know, I think all very helpful, but at a high level, you know, I think it'd help us remind us in terms of sort of what levers we have to pull or not pull as part of this, this process, right? We're sort of fixed on the revenue side. Expenditures is where we've got flexibility in terms of the budget. So any other areas that we should be thinking about, you know?
So I would say on the revenue side, yes, it's highly, highly fixed. There is obviously a small portion of our budget where we're setting the rates for activities, gate fee, you know, all of those kinds of things. I would say, obviously expenditures are the, the portion where we're going to have the biggest control and impact over that. The board would also have the option to consider using fund balance, changing that goal. Just full transparency, that's one time. That's not money that is ongoing. So that's something that we just need to be thoughtful about. We can change that fund balance goal. Those are all things that we can consider. But really, the expenditure side is going to be the biggest portion of it. One other thought that's escaping me. There's potential, if we get better information about revenue, that, you know, some things could change there. But again, that's, that's going to be pretty limited. So I would say, again, salaries and benefits are the big, the big drivers, unfortunately, in every school budget.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else at this point?
Thank you, Val.
Thank you.
You are on item D, which is our 2025-2026 school calendar, and Superintendent Hillman will present that school year calendar.
So we have the 25-26 draft calendar in front of you this evening. You'll notice that we took a little bit longer of a timeframe this year in putting this together. One of the challenges with developing the school calendar is we very rarely get to see how new approaches work out before we have to adopt the next calendar. So over the past couple of years, we've tried a few different things. We decided to wait until a little bit later in the school year to see what was the feedback on some of those strategies. We've met with the meet-and-confer team twice. The meet-and-confer team is made up of Corey and Claudia, part of that from board, myself, and Molly Beeselman from administration, and then five members from the Northfield Education Association. And what you'll see for the 25-26 calendar is a fairly standard approach. I'm going to highlight a few different items. First, we would begin our workshop week officially, the pre-service workshop. So all staff would report back for the first contract day on August 25, 2025. We would start school on the 2nd of September. That's obviously one of the earliest date you can probably hit it. And so then you see a pretty typical first quarter, I think, much to every parent's, I'm not sure if it'll be their chagrin, but Halloween would be a teacher workday. That would be, have been at the end of the first quarter. You'll see there that we have the two workdays at the end of the first quarters we have had the last several years. Those teacher workdays on the calendar are intended to allow teachers to both do grading and to be able to prepare for the next quarter. So that would be the 31st of October and the 3rd of November. You will see that in November, we are not proposing to continue trying the rehearsal e-learning day. That is something that we tried differently this past year. We analyzed the data from that. We looked at the attendance data. While I wouldn't characterize the practice e-learning day on the day before Thanksgiving as unsuccessful, I wouldn't also characterize it as successful enough to keep going with it in the future. So we are taking that Wednesday before Thanksgiving back to being a traditional no-student, no-teacher day. The way that the winter holidays follow, Christmas and New Year's file, next year, we are best to have a two-full-week winter break, returning back on the 5th of January. You will then see that the end of the second semester is on the 22nd of January, and we have those two teacher workdays there. The traditional professional development day on Presidents' Day in February. You'll see the spring break. And then what you'll see is that there's a couple of things I want to point out. We'll have one teacher workday coming out of the third quarter, May 1st. I want to point this out because this will be an unusual day that does not happen very often. So some people are worried that the Big Nine Conference that we are part of has the longest consecutive-running athletic conference music festival in the country. And so for decades and decades, all of the Big Nine Conference schools gather at one of their member high schools, choir, orchestra, band, all come together for a day of learning, performance, a little bit of competition even, friendly competition, I would say. And next year is the year that Northfield is scheduled to hold that. It's a resource-intense day. So we've, John Mahal and Shane Byer have done a lot of looking through the community. The best places to hold these events are the high school and the middle school. So Northfield High School on May 1st would have no school at all, and the teachers actually work the music festival. So they help with the management of the music festival at the high school. We need the middle school facility, but we don't need the middle school teachers to help run that. So at Northfield Middle School would have an e-learning day on May 1st. And then everyone else, elementary school, NCEC, ALC, they would all have a regular school day. So again, theoretically, this is something we host once every 12 years. It depends on the community's resources as to what they need to use. Most schools that we go to, they do use their high school, and their high school activities for that day are canceled. That's not uncommon. If you get to some of the larger schools, they may not have to use other school facilities other than the high school. They might have a community location that they can use. It is a special thing. It's something that the Big Nine Conference schools are very proud of, but it affects us about once every 12 years. So that's May 1st. You'll also see that we're bringing back something that we learned worked really well a few years ago. So taking one of our teacher workdays and bookending it with Memorial Day, we got a lot of feedback from teachers that it was really great to be able to have that workday just before Memorial Day. It gave them a chance to get reset and get everything organized for those last couple of weeks of school that really are pedal to the metal and lots of things happening for those families who want to get out of town. It gives them an extra day for that weekend. But that was something we've tried two calendars ago that we're bringing back. You'll see that the final day of school is June 10th. Do you want to point out, because of that day, it's a, we've had this happen one time before. It's our final one-hour late start Wednesday, and then we typically also release school two hours early on that last day of school. So that would be an unusual piece of where we would be an hour late in and then releasing early during the day. The teachers on the committee felt that that did give enough time during the last day to be able to have that warm goodbye for the summer for, for the high school. That's their last final day. It's a different schedule anyway. For middle school, it's a really celebratory transition day. In elementary school, again, it's that, again, bringing the school year to a close. So the teachers on the committee did feel that they would have enough time that day to be able to do the appropriate goodbyes and bringing the year to completion. So this is the proposed calendar. No action tonight. We'd ask that if you have any feedback, we can certainly make any adjustments, but need you to approve, or would like you to approve this at the February 10th meeting.
Ben, thank you. Would you like to take some comments right now, or do you want to?
I will, yeah, for sure.
Any board members have a comment or a question on this calendar? Yeah, very good. Thanks for that. Next, we have my mid-year evaluation summary. And so we, the board hires one employee, that's our superintendent, and we do a mid-year and an annual evaluation. And so board members completed that. We had five, or no, we had six board members complete it as Rob stepped off, and then we had five of those members leave comments. So I'll read our evaluation summary, and it's also in your packet. The board members provided numeric rating scale. This was for the period July 1, 2024, through December 31, 2024. Our rating scale is a one through five, one being the lowest, five being the highest. And there are 48 job responsibilities organized around eight major topics and five focus goals. I compiled and summarized the board members' evaluations for their numeric ratings. Means were calculated, and then I met with Dr. Hillman on July 22nd to review that appraisal and share the comments left on the evaluation. At this mid-year evaluation, while goals are still in progress, Dr. Hillman received an excellent appraisal and continues to hold the confidence and pride of this school board as a whole. 3.9 out of five in his focus areas, which are still in progress, and 4.5 out of five in all areas excluding those focus areas. Dr. Hillman achieved an overall score of 4.4 out of five for his mid-evaluation, which is excellent. And this board is thankful for your leadership and direction of the Northfield Public Schools. I also highlight one area of strength out of that evaluation, which is a completed focus area. In fact, our superintendent continued to lead an educational, or the focus area is, the superintendent will continue leading an educational campaign to inform the public about the November 5, 2024 bond referendum. Board members were exceptionally satisfied with Dr. Hillman's work in this focus area. He conducted an informational campaign that shared facts with community members at over 80 unique events, from presentations to organizations, to two-hour tours, to distributing literature at public community events. Dr. Hillman maintained a robust website, reflected on tour feedback from community members, met with concerned district stakeholders, and overall carried a successful educational campaign that directly led to the community approving all three questions on our 2024 bond referendum. One board member commented that Dr. Hillman deserved a 10 on our scale of five. Another board member described it like this. Dr. Hillman's commitment to informing our voters was unparalleled. Superintendent Hillman took his role to educate and inform the voters very seriously, and I doubt there was any voter in the district who hadn't heard about the referendum by Election Day and had an opinion on it. His efforts allowed voters to make the final decision, and this board is grateful for the work Dr. Hillman put into the education campaign. At this mid-year evaluation period for '24-'25 school year, the entire board agrees that our district is being led well, and we place our full confidence in Dr. Hillman's leadership so much.
Thank you.
That is my summary, and you can find that in the packet. Right, we'll move on to item F, which is a construction update. This is number four.
Yes, you have construction update number four in your packets. I gave some paper handouts at your board spots. These are the tour books from last week's tours. And so the reason that we're giving you these in paper handouts is that, you know, we've just been asked not to publish the floor plans of the other schools that we visited. There's obviously just a, some security concerns about posting those. But I wanted board members to have the exact same packet that people who went on the tours had. So you can see the tours that happened. One tour that went to Owatonna, a brand-new building, Wasika, which is a complete renovation, St. Peter, which was a brand-new building, Tartan, which is some new construction, some demolition, some renovation. Another tour went to Rock Ridge High School in Virginia, and also to Mora High School in Mora, Minnesota. Both of those were new construction in the last couple of years. Then on January 22nd, that would be tour book day two. Another group of people, over 20 people on that day, went to see athletic facilities, specifically at New Prague, Mount West Tonka, Mounds View, and Shasago Lakes. So those are the facility tours. A couple of our board members, as you can tell, I've also got finishing a little frog in my throat. There's a higher percentage of people who went on the tours who came back with a little bit of tickle in their throat. So Maggie and Amy aren't here tonight to share their perspectives, but Jeff got to go on both the Owatonna wing and then also on the activities tour. So would you want to share your reflections of what you saw, Jeff?
Little bit of a comment, being I was on both days, both tours. So started out, we jumped on a bus, and some people drove, but left at the high school at 7:30, back at 5:30-ish. Both days, kind of for that. So I mean, if you divided the days, what is it, like 250 miles a day? So it was a lot of, lot of space, a lot of travel, but I think well worth it. And I mean, I've been to Owatonna before, but I, I just think that when you had that many people showing up, and then you target in on some ideas and kind of what you like and what you don't like, you get a lot of feedback. So that was really kind of the takeaway. I mean, I have a lot of notes and different things I'll talk about when we get into the construction meetings. But, so I mean, I think for feedback, I mean, that was just a smart thing to do. And it was, it was a long day, but, you know, both of them, but well worth it, so.
And so I had a chance to go on the tour to Rock Ridge and to Mora. And so just, again, I would agree with Jeff, ours was a lot more, you got to see more schools than we did with about the same amount of driving. But we were really pleased that we got to see that new building in Virginia, Minnesota. Again, a lot of really good things to like, a lot of things that you might do differently. Same thing with Mora. Mora was newer, a little bit different approach than what Rock Ridge had. But, you know, the interesting piece about the Rock Ridge construction is that not only was it a new building, but it was also a brand-new school district, bringing together two traditional Iron Range rivals into the same district. And so that part of the world, they also have that IRR, which is a state fund intended to help invest in the Iron Range. So that was able to reduce a lot of the cost to taxpayers. So there's some real upgrades, a picturesque setting in the woods, very, we would say, a very pure innovative approach to how they're seeing education play out. And so it was probably the most innovative building of any of them on the tour. Mora, you know, that community had gone through, this is their eighth referendum to get the facility passed. Theirs was also interesting because it basically created a K-12 campus. And so their elementary school and their high school connect to each other through a fieldhouse. So it's an interesting, it was just an interesting model. And I think as Jeff really said very well, you see things in design elements that you like, and you also see things that you say, we don't want that. To bring the tour to a close, Sal Bagley and Wold have surveyed all of the tour participants. There were more than 30-some people that went on day one and around 20 or so that went on day two. And tomorrow, on Wednesday night, the core planning team will be going through all of that feedback and starting to help devise the criteria that's going to yield the first set of floor plans for the, for the plan. So it's a good process. The tours were well worth it. So again, the next core planning team meeting is this Wednesday, and then the first activity subcommittee meets in late February. And then the first activity subcommittee uh meets in late February. So that's our construction report. I know Jeff or I would be uh happy to stand for any questions about the tours or anything related to those uh events.
Okay, thank you. Board members, do you have any questions or comments? Okay, Ben?
Just curious, did anything stand out in particular to either one of you in terms of, you know, any of the sites that you visited? That was really kind of
Well, first day was more about schools. The second day was more about looking at expanded gyms and kind of almost seeing what, what kind of works and doesn't really work with having a community slash school district uh expanded gym where you're sharing that. But uh, no, just a lot of um kind of what the trends are. And uh, um, I mean, I I thought, I mean, after a while, they kind of all start looking a little bit alike. So, but you've taken the note, and I think once you bring the whole group together and you put all of the notes together, it's going to be easy to kind of say, what's your one, two, and three for what I really like and what I don't like? And that'll, that'll really, really help come and come and put the plan together, so.
And I think that um to build on what Jeff said, I think that there are interesting ways that you look at different facilities trying to solve the same problem. So for example, if you take natural light as an example, we probably saw four across the two teams, probably sort of four or five different ways that people tried to address the issue of natural light. You know, ranging from floor-to-ceiling glass, um, you know, to renovated spaces that, you know, put windows in what would have been traditional hallway walls um to a combination thereof. So it's just really interesting to see, based on each um school, how do they go about trying to solve a particular issue? Everyone talked about natural light. How they approached it was different. Um, a lot, everyone talked about collaboration and flexibility, every single building. It all played out very differently, right? Some on the uber pure side, others on what I think would be um kind of an augmented traditional side. So it's just interesting to see how different places solve the same issue, but with very different design techniques. And I think it gave us a lot of good ideas, as Jeff said, what, what do we think is going to work best here within the funding that we have?
Anyone else question or comment? Okay, very good. Thank you for that report. All right, we have item six is our committee reports. And we do have a report from the District Youth Council representative, um, Ben Miller. Would you like to give us an update or let the report stand?
I can give a quick update. So yeah, that it's been a pleasure to serve with District Youth Council for the past couple of years, a year and a half, however long it's been. But I know I'll be stepping off that group uh as we go through the committee assignments here later in the agenda. But um, yeah, you know, the group's done a wonderful job, obviously, staying engaged with the conversations around the referendum. And then, you know, they'll pay, play a pivotal role too as we head into some of the budget prioritization discussions here. So I know we've got uh one member here taking notes tonight. So really appreciate the opportunity to be um the board representative to that group. Oh, two, I can't see through the pillar, Sam. That, that's uh my X-ray vision I left at home. But, but I wanted to thank um obviously everyone in the District Youth Council for um having me for the past couple of years. So thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we also have a uh report from Amy Gerwitz, and she wasn't able to be here tonight. So you'll find her Civ Sec report in your packet. We have item seven is our consent agenda. As a reminder, there were some personnel items in the table file added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from that grouping for separate consideration? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping?
So moved.
Moved by Corey, second. Bye, Ben, thank you. Hey, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item eight is our items for individual action. We have two items tonight and one of them is a resolution. Um, so Kelly will help us with that roll call vote. Make sure that your mic is on so that we can record your vote. So item A is a resolution authorizing the sale of the general obligation school board bond series twenty twenty-five A. I move to approve the insurance and sale, the issuance, excuse me, and sale of general obligation school building bonds for the Northfield High School construction project in the amount of thirty-nine million dollars as authorized by the passage of the bond referendum on November fifth, twenty twenty-four by district voters. Who will second?
Second.
Second by Corey. Is there any discussion on this resolution that we can take up? None? All right, Kelly, will you help us with the roll call vote?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Gonzalez, George?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Resolution passes. Item B is our board committee assignments. Is there a motion to approve the board committee appointments and representation to various organizations and school liaisons for calendar year twenty twenty-five?
Moved.
Okay, moved by Corey. Can I have a second? Thank you, Jenny. Is there any discussion at this point? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. Next is items for information. And this um, the week of January twenty through twenty-six is, was paraprofessional recognition week in Minnesota. Northfield Public Schools proudly acknowledges the dedication and hard work of our educational assistants. Educational assistants play a vital role in supporting instruction, assisting with virtual learning, providing personal care services, and so much more. We are grateful for their commitment and thank them for the impact they have on our students on the daily. Item ten is our future meetings. We have February first, a workshop in the Northfield boardroom or, I don't know.
We are going to meet um at the Northfield Community Resource Center. I will give you the location tomorrow.
Okay.
Because we'll be meeting right before the um D Y C brunch, so we'll meet at the N C R.
Okay, thank you. So that um we have a workshop, the first, and then followed by our District Youth Council brunch. We have a regular board meeting on February tenth in this boardroom. February twenty-fourth, also a regular meeting in this boardroom. And March tenth, a regular board meeting in this boardroom. That is all the business that we have for tonight. Thank you to each of you and I look forward to working with you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Moved by Jeff. Second. By Ben. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. We are adjourned.